Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the August meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners. We've got a full house. Nice to see our special guests here. We've already been busy with them a little bit. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Smith if he will lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please.
Heavenly Father, we give thanks for this nation. We ask your blessings and guidance for our national and state leaders. We ask for this board to act on behalf of our county in a way that honors you. We ask for the protection of our law enforcement, our first responders, our emergency rescue personnel, and our firefighters, and those men and women in uniforms serving this nation here and around the world. We give thanks for the many freedoms you provide us. The freedom to worship, to speak freely, the right of the free and honest press, the enduring freedom to peaceably assemble, and the freedom to petition our government for a redress of grievances. Help this elected board as well all those in positions of power and authority to govern wisely for the common good of all. In the most holy and precious name of your Son, Jesus, amen.
Amen. Our allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united by indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Good job. That's the best pledge I've heard in this chamber for quite some time. Thank you. At this time, are there any additional items for the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to add discussion to repeal the current concealed carry handgun ordinance to allow law-abiding citizens with concealed carry permit to come in those buildings.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other items to be added to the agenda? Okay, is there a motion?
All in favor.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, now to some good business at hand. If we could get the team to come up. Just come on up here to the front and we'll get your parents in here. Just come on up to the front. Let your folks come in, maybe. Y'all are filling up the room tonight, packing the house. All right. We are very, very pleased to have these young ladies here tonight, and it is my honor on behalf of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to read this proclamation this evening. Whereas the Lee County Parks and Recreation eight and under All-Stars Youth Softball Team exhibited hard work, dedication, sportspersonship, talent, and exceptional team chemistry in the statewide athletic committee eight U state softball tournament. And whereas the eight U All-Stars won the 2019 SWAC eight U state championship in Tarboro with wins over Onslow County, Tar River, and Williamson. And whereas, under the leadership and guidance of head coach Jeremy Isom and assistant coaches Jacob Dixon, Josh Thomas, and Kathy Isom, the team was able to go undefeated with victories over Onslow, Williamson, and Tar River to advance to and win the championship game against Williamson. And whereas the Lee County Board of Commissioners recognizes the Lee County Parks and Recreation eight U All-Stars Youth Softball Team members Victoria Thomas, Laura Isom, Kinsley Pugh, Carter Dixon, Isabella Jordan, Joynette Sanchez, J.C. Rader, Lily Ann Walters, Savannah Gonto, Ashanti Frazier, Aubrey Gunter, and Jaylen Barnes for the accomplishments they demonstrated over the past several months and for their commitment, perseverance, and love of the sport of softball. And whereas the eight U All-Stars represented Lee County admirably in the 2019 SWAC state tournament to close out a remarkable 2019 softball season. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners proclaim August 19th through the 25th, 2019, as Lee County Parks and Recreation eight and under All-Stars Youth Softball Team Week in Lee County, North Carolina, and call upon residents to observe this week recognizing and celebrating the team and their contributions to and successes shared with the Lee County community dated this, the 19th day of August, 2019. Good job, ladies. Thank you so much. Are you going to play softball next year? Hopefully, we'll see you here next year for another state title. You want me to come down? Okay. Here, Robert, I'm going to scoot behind you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. I know the dedication for the coaches and the parents as well. It truly takes everybody. Good job, ladies. Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it. Have a good summer and start at school, okay? Okay. Thank you so much.
All right, go play ball.
Get some of their energy. Oh, you're quite welcome. Thank you. Thank you for bringing them and coming tonight. Thank you. Yes. Okay, is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is adopted. Thank you very much. That's a great way to start the meeting. Okay, at this time, we will begin with the public hearings. Our first public hearing is a joint public hearing with Lee County Planning Board for rezoning requests for approximately 10.4 acres off Eaks Road.
If we could give a moment to allow-
Yeah, we need to give a little time for our planning board folks to come in. I think they got stopped at the door.
I think they had a mop going out.
No.
As a side note, Madam Chair, are we going to put the discussion of concealed carry into new business?
Yes, item D. Yes, sir. The softball team got your seats warmed up for you.
They were sitting two of us.
Sometimes three. Yeah. Let's see. Ms. McNeil, I've gone ahead and read the intro, but take a breath.
Okay, so again, this is the public hearing on the rezoning request for the 10.4 acres off Eaks Road.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, planning board members, and staff. Planning staff has received a rezoning application from Dowell and Patty Eeks as the first step to possibly marketing 10 acres of land off the Eaks Road for residential development. The intent is to rezone the land to residential restricted to ensure that no manufactured mobile homes, commonly referred to as trailers, may be placed on the property when and if it's sold to a developer or individual property owner. The Eeks reside on the adjoining property to the south. They've lived in the area for a long time and would like to protect both their and the neighbors' property values and yet be able to sell some of their land. They feel that rezoning is a more effective means of controlling the future development of the property than private covenants and restrictions which may be removed or altered by future developers and/or property owners. Therefore, they submitted this rezoning request for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing.
I don't know that she was finished.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
See, we're just changing the picture.
We won't open it then.
I will just point out that with regard to zoning, the main difference between RA, which is what it is currently zoned, residential agricultural, and residential restricted, which is the proposed rezoning, is that RR does not allow mobile or manufactured homes. The lot size requirement is 30,000 square feet instead of 40,000 square feet, and the minimum lot depth is 125 feet instead of 150 feet. Since any development at this location will require the installation of private septic systems, this will be the primary factor determining the actual lot size, but it cannot be smaller than allowed per the zoning district. And I will pause at this point and allow you to open the public hearing and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak in favor of the rezoning request? If you could, for the record, state your name and address, please.
My name is Dowell Eeks, live at 333 Eaks Road. Let's see, Madam Chairman and Board.
Good evening.
To be here and make this request. We're just, some of the property, we just want to rezonate. The Quay Ridge community has grown with the advantageous of the restructure of the golf course. We hope this will provide some more home base that can go with the community and that's increase that thing. Other than that, that's all we're looking for. We hope to put in a, well, we don't know. We're just waiting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Eeks. Anyone else to speak in favor of the rezoning request? Anyone to speak in opposition of the rezoning request? Okay, we'll close the public hearing on that item. Okay, now, we'll lead up to the public hearing on the proposed UDO text amendment to update the City of Sanford's Public Works Director's Certificate.
All right, good evening again. As per the request of the City of Sanford Public Works Director Vixar, the language and the- in the Public Works Certificate that's on final subdivision plats within the jurisdiction of Sanford and Broadway is proposed to be revised to replace the vague reference of the city or town excepting streets, utilities, and other required public improvements with the more specific reference of the city and town excepting public water, sewer, and/or streets. The rationale for this revision is to clarify specifically what improvements the City of Sanford and Town of Broadway will be responsible for maintaining within a subdivision. The certificate for Lee County has, already has the proper language. The existing and proposed certificates are provided for your reference, and I will pause at this time to allow the Chairman to open the public hearing and answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing on the text amendment update for the UDO for the City of Sanford's Public Works Director's Certificate. Anyone to speak in favor of that update? Anyone to speak against? Okay. We'll close the public hearing on that. Our next public hearing is regarding proposed amendment to the UDO to create a new airport density overlay district and to consider zoning amendment to the official zoning map to apply new airport density overlay district. Mr. Downey, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. As the Mayor, rather, as the Chair indicated, this is also a text amendment proposed to the UDO. It's actually a two-part process. What I'm bringing to you is kind of, the two are interrelated. I'm bringing to you a public hearing on both, the text amendment as well as potential rezoning for the county because essentially what we're trying to do, beginning on page 246 of your staff report, and I'll go through it briefly. During the development of our update, ours being the county and the city and Broadway working together, where we did a comprehensive update to the land use plan, we met with folks with the airport, had an opportunity to kind of present what was being proposed in and around the airport from a land use perspective. At the same time, coincidentally, the airport authority was also looking at a master plan and updating a plan as it relates specifically what's happening at the airport. In having further discussions during that period about a year and a half, two years ago, the airport authority expressed concern about the lack, the current lack of rules to protect residential encroachment in and around the airport. Right now, essentially, the majority of that property that's in that red boundary as well as kind of outside of that red boundary, basically most of northern Lee County, is RA zoning, residential agricultural, as is most of the county, which is essentially a, almost a one acre lot, could be developed for residential as well as agricultural uses. The concern was, could properties be acquired, several properties be acquired, and then a developer could come in and build a subdivision in there? So at that concern, staff was asked to put together something that we could bring in front of this board, in front of the city, in front of Broadway, to do an amendment to see if we could do something to kind of protect the footprint or kind of the encroachment there. A lot of that, too, had to do with the investment that both the city and the county and Saga have worked together to make in terms of extending sewer to that area for job creation and those kind of things. So again, the idea was to come up with something that was reasonable that would protect that investment around the airport. So with that, staff put together a proposed draft, which is included in your packet. We had a public meeting. The first of two public meetings we had in August 2018, we sent letters out to folks who were affected by the area in red there, as well as adjoining property owners, and we asked them to come out and meet with us at the airport. It was planning staff, and it was the airport director, and we had an opportunity to kind of sit down with them and discuss what was being proposed. If you look at page, at the bottom of page 246 in the memo there, you can see approximately 30 to 40 property owners attended. The primary concern, as it was expressed, as it related to zoning, was not so much the ability to create a subdivision for a developer, it was the ability to create a few lots for children, for family members, to be able to do something that would allow them to do some development, but not necessarily did they want to build a subdivision for marketing like you would think of in a traditional sense. So understanding that, staff, and also just as a note there, other concerns were expressed that weren't related to the amendment, but Mr. Hutes was there as the airport representative and had a great discussion with them, too, to kind of update them in terms of what was happening in and around the airport. But as a result of that first public meeting, staff went back, we looked at options, and we actually revised the amendment to include a new exception. That is, fortunately, we have language in our UDO now that's called a minor subdivision, and it kind of fit perfectly. We felt like it would work really well for this. And so what that means is, if this is adopted, everything in that red boundary would have a limit of maximum of one unit per five acres, except that now with this new exception, you could essentially create, under a minor subdivision, up to six lots if you have frontage on a public street, or up to three lots if you're on a private road through that. So you can create a few lots for children, for family members, or just to create a few lots if you want to sell those lots. But it would restrict the ability to do a large subdivision unless you're willing to do five, one unit for every five acres. I'll pause there in case there's questions about that before I go on.
Within the red marking you have there, are there any public property owners within those boundaries?
I'm sorry, I'll say that one more time.
You got a red line there.
Yes.
Indicating the overlay. Are there private property owners within those boundaries?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Is there a way that we might get a map that would identify those property owners and their amount of acreage?
Absolutely. I can do that.
Okay. If it was seen to me, it would be helpful if people could see exactly what the exemption might be. I think you said you could do two or three lots?
Yes, sir. You could do six, so if you have, say, lower Moncur or something like that, if you have frontage on a public street and you have a lot of acreage, you can do up to six lots at one acre, basically what it is now. And then if you created a new easement off of that, you could do up to three off of there, kind of private easement.
Is it your opinion that you have about 40 property owners in here or more than that?
Let's see, there is, if you go to page 259 of your packet, you can see that's the list of the folks that are affected. So yeah, it looks like just ballparking, it's more than 40. So basically, in conclusion, we did have a second meeting. We presented that revised approach that included the minor subdivision exemption. We only had about 15 to 20 property owners show up with that. Most of the concerns there really had nothing to do with the amendment. They really just wanted to talk more about the airport expansion and what was happening around the airport. Did have a couple of folks who just were not, to be quite candid with you, they were not happy about this, didn't want this. But the overwhelming majority seemed to be satisfied with the change that we've made with the minor subdivision. I will say, we obviously sent letters back out, we put signs up, we posted, we did all the things we needed to do for tonight's hearing. I had four calls. None of the calls that I received were folks who were actually affected through the letter. They happened to see the zoning signs, and they just wanted to know what was going on, and they were fine with it. I'll pause there for additional questions and to open the public hearing, Madam Chair.
Any more questions? Okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for the UDO text amendment for the airport overlay. Is there anyone to speak for the amendment? Okay.
Good evening. This is an old, familiar place to be here. So it is a pleasure to be here, and it's a pleasure to represent the Sanford Lee County Regional Airport Authority. I'm Bob Hutes, I'm airport director out at the airport, and some of you have been out there more than a few times, and I really am asking you again to come out and visit and see what's going on out there. So I'm obviously here speaking in favor of this amendment and certainly bring the glad tidings of the authority also, and there are a couple of members here who will also speak, I think, in favor of the amendments to see, again, what we can do about helping protect the area. When we opened up the airport, the investment out there to build that airport was around $14 million. The initial investment by the city and the county was to the tune of somewhere around $350,000 apiece. Since then, we've really had continued improvements. Every year, we seem to be doing something out there at the airport and have had the pleasure of being involved with that as a member of economic development on that board. We were adding additional capacity at the airport for people to build larger, to build hangars, to make it easier for airplanes to maneuver on the airfield, particularly for larger airplanes. Since then, we've really doubled, more than doubled, the investment out there. So in excess of $30, $35 million has been invested. This is a public investment. This is not done, you know, with just Lee County dollars or City of Sanford dollars. This is done with federal and state dollars who are interested in building a great airport out there, and I think we have that. In terms of the impact of this airport every year, the greatest university in the world does a study, and they look at airport or airport activity in the state of North Carolina. In 2018, they came out with a study, they compared our airport and looked at statistics of every other airport, commercial and general aviation, and determined that there's somewhere in the neighborhood of $61 million worth of business revenue generated because the airport is there. That doesn't necessarily mean it's all here in Lee County, but it's certainly in this region. 470 jobs are supported at the airport. 50 or so people work at the airport on a daily basis. They talk about personal income, they talk about $2.4 million in state and local taxes generated because of the location of the airport, 63 annual, 63,000 annual operations. So think about that, divide that by 365, and see what happens on a daily basis. And we support a population within a 30-mile radius of over 330,000 people. Today, we've got 160-plus airplanes based out there. When you look at the tax value, you have seen that grow every year, and we're very, very happy about that. That doesn't happen by happenstance. That happens because we've got a lot of good partners, and we'll talk about that in just a second. Just a few more comments, and I'll stop. We recently completed, as Marshall said, a master plan for the airport where we looked back at the last 20 years, what happened, and we tried to plan and prepare for the next one. Again, in that discussion, we talked about trying to protect this airport. Really, for the entire time we've been in business out there, we talked about trying to protect this airport, and this is an opportunity for us to do so. You and the City of Sanford have entrusted the airport authority with the leadership to protect, maintain, and grow this airport. We've been fortunate to have good partners in Lee County government, the City of Sanford, the Division of Aviation, and the FAA, and really many others to accomplish those objectives. With the tremendous investment and the value this airport provides this region, this community, it's incumbent for this authority to make this request to help protect this airport, and we think this would certainly help to have this overlay district. We know that's painful for some of the people that own land there. We understand that, but we would not be doing our job at the airport if we didn't ask and let you consider that. The authority supports a more restrictive development standard for the protection of the airport and hopes you'll vote in favor of this recommendation. I invite you all to come out to the airport. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutes.
My name's Kirk Bradley. 603 Carthage Street, Suite 120, and I am currently the Chair of Sanford Area Growth Alliance, and as a result of that, I get to sit on the Airport Authority Board, and I would like to speak in favor of this. I certainly understand the concerns of the property owners, and I hope there's a way to address that, maybe perhaps already has. That was certainly our intention. But the airport is, has the potential to be a real crown jewel and is important for economic development, both for Sanford, Lee County, and regionally with the Moncur Megasite. RDU is trying to push out general aviation. We have the ability to capture that, which brings more larger aircraft, more tax space here. The reason in Horace Williams and Chapel Hill is an excellent example of that, where there wasn't forward thinking, and now that airport is closed. And so I think it's important to accommodate the property owners and their ability to pass property onto their heirs. What we don't want to see happen is a lot of people move into subdivisions and say, "We didn't know there was an airport there," and you need to limit the ability for the airport to operate, and that becomes constructive. And so by putting an overlay in place, it is part of what would be disclosed in any kind of property transaction, so it would make future buyers aware, and that would be less of an issue going forward. And the last thing I'll say is, to develop more intensely is only going to happen if you have water and sewer. The only reason water and sewer is coming out there in the near term is because of the airport and the decisions the elected bodies have made to move that out there to help us expand, hopefully, some additional industrial development in and around for users who want that type of proximity to the runway. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Anyone else to speak in favor of the overlay? Okay. Anyone to speak against the overlay?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm George Whitaker. I live here in Sanford, 1410 Spring Lane, with my wife Molly. I'm here on behalf of my mother-in-law, Sarah Lawrence, who is one of the property owners within the red overlay there. And my concern is this. She, my mother-in-law, Sarah, currently owns, I think it's 159.35 acres there, and previously her family provided about, I'm thinking it was roughly 74, 75 acres for the initial construction of the airport. And we were glad to do that. We think this is a good thing. The airport is a good thing. One question that I have and I've not been answered yet, is I've noticed in the material that there was some mention made about negative effects of residential construction in the, within the red overlay area, and I haven't know what the negative, negative part of that is. But be that as it may, this being America, the property owners, I think, are entitled to use their land for as much profit as they can, as long as it's not something that's illegal. And currently, the Lawrence property there is growing timber. And, but there may come a time, I mean, someone in the family, whether it's Sarah, probably not, I think she is about 99 years old and doing very well, but at some point in time, someone in our family may decide that we want to do some residential development and make the highest use of the property that we have out there. And we would not like to have it restricted in the manner that this amendment to the ordinance would do. And as an example, currently, technically speaking, she could put one house on each of the 159 acres that she has there and make the profit off of that. Under this change, she would be able to have, as I could get you, about 31 houses. And you can see the difference in the financial ramifications that would have on the family. That is our concern, and we would, we don't like this idea of just saying, "Okay, there's going to be negative effect of residential development here." We don't even know what that is, and to restrict our ability to use the land as we see fit. And that's our problem.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sure. How are you doing?
Great. Good to see you all.
Good to see you, David.
My name is David Clegg, C-L-E-G-G. I reside at 1221 Radcliffe Drive. I don't want this discussion to become a pro-airport, anti-airport, because it's not. It's not about that at all. As a matter of fact, in the first generation of there even being an airport in Lee County, back when Bruce Thomas and Kate Covington and John Foshee and Roberts Company and Max Storrs, Gene Phelps, all decided it was a good idea that Lee County needed an airport. My dad, Wilbur Clegg, who was President Key Roofing at that time, was in that group. And some of my fondest childhood memories, when I was six, seven, and eight, were going out to the old airport with my dad and watching the airplane and understanding the camaraderie of that incredible bunch of business people who really made Lee County a lot of what it is today. And so, having seen the first generation, I mean, we went through the whole steps in my family. We started out with a Cessna 150 and moved up to a 172 and ended up with a 182. And as that process moved on, my dad took a tremendous interest in the airport, and from the mid-1970s up until the mid-1980s, he was a member of the Airport Commission and remained on the Airport Commission until 1982, when his Parkinson's diagnosis took away his pilot's license, and he could have stayed on for another three years, but I vividly remember him saying, someone who was on that board... ought to be able to fly," and he couldn't, so he stepped away. So, clearly, I am not here to talk ill about the airport. There is not anyone here who understands the importance. In one of my former lives, I was an Assistant Secretary of Commerce under the Purdue administration, and I certainly understand how, when you talk about economic development, you talk about those infrastructure pieces that created quality of life. I am talking about Lower Moncur Road, though. And the Cleggs had been on Lower Moncur Road for a whole long time because it is well documented that British General Charles Marquis Cornwallis was attacked by the Whig insurgents who were holed up in the Clegg House when he was making his retreat from the Battle of Guilford in 1781.
Wow.
So, I think what you see here is a major route on Lower Moncur Road. That is what I'm talking about. And I am the 220 acres that's right here.
Okay.
And this is the Deep River. What concerns me about this issue is that, as you can see, I am on the north side of Lower Moncur Road. In my opinion, nothing on the north side of Lower Moncur Road should be in this overlay district because it's simply not. There's no articulated benefit to the infrastructure improvement. I think, as you look at my 220 acres, what is significant is that although that was a working farm, that piece kind of came out of my family and went back in. It's been back in for 100 years now. And along with other tracts on the other side and in close proximity to it, not in this overlay, is to affect the fewest number of people in a traditionally agricultural area who have traditional family, small block ties, and who have acreage in this community that could be, maybe isn't now, could be residential development, particularly my 220 acres, which is on the Deep River, which has stunningly beautiful bluffs across the Deep River, and certainly has, at some point in time, in some growth scenario, perhaps does have a residential component there. At this time, it is a certified tree farm and is happily so. There's certainly no plans to change that in any way. But to essentially come in here and for reasons that are not concrete, specific, and strategic, to tell me you're going to lower my residential development potential by 80%, I think is heavy-handed. I think it brushes with inverse condemnation, and I believe that we need to go back while we still have time. And let's look at this situation again. I do believe significant parts of this overlay should be removed. I believe that in what is left, I think you need to look at some density issues. I think 80% is a little heavy-handed. The minor subdivision issue doesn't affect me in any way, nor does it affect the great percentage of people within this zone. That minor subdivision portion should perhaps be in any sort of amended view at this. I think that this plan, as it exists today, really screams to be sent back to the Planning Board for some revision, for some further discussion with landowners, and to look at the burdensome issues that may be played out here for folks who have held this land, maybe not since 1781, but who have held this land as part of their retirement plan, as part of an ongoing investment scenario. We need to look, there's got to be in zoning, it has to be in equation. You have to look at both sides of the equation. You have to look at what the zoning and what the land use, what the well-thought-out land use decisions benefit, the benefited land, and you also have to look at the other side, that side that is not benefiting, and you need to try to balance that as much as possible. This is out of balance, and I think we have the opportunity now, before it becomes confrontational, to take a look at it and to really see what needs to be done to ensure the economic viability. My gosh, Lee County is a textbook of economic development right now. There's great things happening here. Under no circumstances do I not want to be a part of that and have always enjoyed being a part of that. I just went off a six-year stint on the Temple Theater Board of Directors, and to see that as an economic engine, to see who comes here, to see the, looking at the demographics of ticket sales. People will come to Lee County. People understand Lee County. I know there's good things coming on the horizon this very week. All of those issues are significant, and this needs to play an equally significant part in it. And to balance the wonderful economic development opportunities that are going with the historical use of this community, with the historical identity of this community, with the ancestral, literally, roots of this community within Lee County to make it what it is today. And I hope that you will take this opportunity to look at that and to engage those of us who are actively interested and understand larger governmental issues at play here, and absolutely believe that something can be worked out that is going to make everyone be able to move forward feeling a lot better. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Anyone else to speak against the overlay?
My name is Edith Wright. I'm in the 85 mentee land, Sanford, North Carolina. My land is right here in here at the table.
Okay.
Thank you. I purchased that land for my retirement, for my medical issues as I get older, and if I had to go to a nursing home. Right now, I'm seeing that it's being jeopardized. Are we living in democracy and not a dictatorship? If I'm not mistaken, when I went to the meeting, the last meeting, the sewage system was for the airport only, not for the people. If I'm not mistaken, that's what I heard. But like I said, I'm looking for, I am retired, but I was looking for a more pleasant retirement, more money incoming into, so I can do things. And I think that the airport, the plan that they have now is detrimental to my health and detrimental to my life. And I hope they consider that. I want to put more houses on my land so that I can sell, sell my property, so I can make more money. My property was an investment to my future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Anyone else to speak against? Good evening.
My name's Christine Ammons. I'm part of the Ammons Farmland, which has right much property. I guess my concern is, why are we restricted for development?
Would you mind stating your address for the record?
1973 Farrell Road.
Thank you.
This, the overlay is coming over a lot of our property, which is crop land, timber, pasture, and it comes over. No problem. We don't really want it ever set developed. We like to farm it from now on. I think we need farmers in this county and everywhere else, if y'all want to eat, other than from Chita. I live on Farrell Road. The planes come over my house constantly, but I'm not in the overlay. So, what good is an overlay going to do? They're coming over my house already, and I don't understand how you do all the little lines that you block out some people and include others. Down at the bottom here, this is kind of weird looking to me. Why don't you use straight lines if you've got to have an overlay? See, I'm mushy down here. Farm, we're going to be, we have timber, we have pasture land, we grow crops. And someday, my great kids, my great-grandkids might need the money from it. Meanwhile, we're just kind of hand-packing and trying to keep this a farm. I say, I really don't understand. Do the big airports have overlays where they can't have any traffic over their houses? I guess that's all I've got to say. I didn't plan on saying anything, but I felt like I need to.
Thank you, Ms. Ammons.
Thank you.
No, we're glad you did. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Joel Ammons, her son. We own, like she said, around 1,200 acres. The majority of it is in the overlay. Like she said, don't plan on developing it.
Sir, can you state your address for the record as well?
2333 Farrell Road.
Thank you.
We don't plan on developing anytime in the near future. I have a problem with, like I say, anybody telling us what to do with our land, what we can and can't do with our land. Like I say, we probably have 800, 900 acres in this, and we voiced our opinion at the first meeting. Nothing's really changed for us. As far as the city sewer coming through there, I don't think he was brought there for the airport. He was brought to get the Megasite in Chatham County. We own the rehab center that the sewer line went right by, asked to join it. They wouldn't let us. Got 131-bed facility there. No, it wasn't, "Well, let's look at it." It was a no, absolutely no. So, not in favor of that at all. And like I say, I mean, you could go on and on for reasons that we don't want it. I'm going to be short and sweet. I'm opposed, completely opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ammons. Anyone else to speak against? Okay, so at this time, we'll close the public hearing, and we did thank everybody for their comments. At this time, we'll open up for the public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 NCDOT Community Transportation Program Grant Application with Ms. Davidson.
Do you want to release the Planning Board?
Oh, yes. Yes, Debbie, if you don't mind, let the Planning Board go out to their meeting. I know. Just kind of. A lot of turnover.
Okay. We have to count how many attended the public hearings, so I was asking Melanie to recount because I need to deduct from what I had on earlier. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm bringing before you already the FY 2021 grant proposal for North Carolina Department of Transportation. They just keep pushing it earlier and earlier. So, this year, or coming year, for administrative, we are requesting $221,254,000. This is actually given to us from NCDOT how much we are allowed to apply for, and that would have a 15% local match of $33,188. This covers a percentage of five administrative salaries and their benefits, as long as travel, general office supplies, space rental of the facility next door, technical supplies, and then it also covers 85% of the vehicle insurance cost for 18 vehicles within the county. The consolidated capital request that is in my public hearing notice was for $18,317, and if we can include what I'm about to say into the minutes, since I did the public hearing notice in the Sanford Herald, it was discovered that our camera equipment for the 18 vehicles is outdated, and we can no longer get replacement cameras. Each van has four cameras in it. They're going to an HD system. So, NCDOT has allowed us to include an additional $38,358 for four-camera system and computer hardware to download the disc from those vans if we want to check or to watch them, see what the drivers are doing. This camera system has been very beneficial in several incidents. It's caused us to not be at fault when we were, they were claiming that we were at fault, and also has happened any happenings for the clients that may have issues on the vans or not putting their seat belts on. We also catch them a lot for that. But also, any incidences on the vans, we've been able to note those. So, with that in mind, we are requesting $56,675 in capital with a $5,678 match. We are not asking for any replacement vehicles. We are about to order, you just approved the purchase order for five new vans that we'll order as soon as I get the PO approved, and those will be in sometime in April or May, but we are not eligible for any replacements next year due to mileage. We will almost have a new fleet at the end of 2020. Very exciting. We're looking at 20 tablets for the van drivers to utilize, an upgrade of the software package that we currently use for routing through Institute of Transportation Research and Education, NC State University, four replacement desktop computers with monitors, and upgrading our dispatch radio equipment.
Debbie, what was the addition for the cameras? $38,000?
$38,358.
Okay.
Which makes the total capital $56,675, and I did get permission from NCDOT to add that tonight.
Okay.
And it will actually then be brought to you on the application at the September meeting for your approval.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you. Okay, I'll open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2021 NCDOT Community Transportation Program Grant. Is there anyone to speak in favor of this? Anyone to speak against? Okay, close the public hearing. Thank you so much, Debbie. That's good news. Okay, the last public hearing, the Proposed Economic Development Project. Mr. Smith, I saw him come in. There he is. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, members of the board. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of a project that is considering our community. I'm still at a competitive project, looking at several other states. We're excited about this opportunity to bring potentially 460 new jobs over the life of this project and an investment of, new taxable investment of $170 million. There's a great deal of information about this project that we have provided, given both in closed session and in our announcement prior to this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to open a public hearing on the Proposed Economic Development Project. You want to speak for?
Kirk Bradley, Chairman of Sanford Area Growth Alliance, 603 Carthage Street, Suite 120. I'd like to say this is a very unusual project, very large project. It, we are recommending it for the local investment grant. It met three of our targeted criteria, which is a target industry, job quantity, and quality and tax-based investment. Very important. It's received one of the highest grades because of those three standards, target sector job and investment. Being in advanced manufacturing is very important. We're going to have an announcement this week that's going to be a lot of knowledge worker jobs, but also skilled worker jobs, and we're always looking for job creators that will come here and employ all types of our, of our employment base. We've talked about, you have all the specific information. Just looking to see if there's any other specific things. One, I guess, two things I would say is, this is an international company that's a leader within their country. They tend to come early and bring other similar employers. That's important for us. We want to find those types of companies. Obviously, the types of manufacturing that they will do... Uh, obviously, the types of, uh, manufacturing that they will do will bring both, uh, direct and indirect jobs to our community. So, uh, it's a very unusual, uh, circumstance, but an unusual company. We've gotten this and worked, uh, uh, it's come very quickly and worked very hard. And I think we're in a great position to get it, should we, uh, offer them the kind of local incentives that they've requested, so.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Bradley. Anyone else to speak in favor of the project? Anyone to speak against?
My name is Jim Womack. I live at 1615 Boone Trail Road here in Sanford, North Carolina. I'm not against this company, uh, or this company locating in Sanford, North Carolina or Lee County. I think it'd be great if they were to locate here. And, and my suspicion is, is that they will locate here, uh, independent of what you do on this particular project. I worked for South Asian companies, uh, in the past. I was a regional sales director for one of them, and I think I understand their culture. I think I understand a lot about what they want to do in the knowledge worker industry. And, uh, and I do believe that Sanford would be a good location for a company like that. In fact, we've been looked at by South Asian companies in the past. I would, I would offer to you that there are several reasons why I think you should revisit this, uh, economic development project and, and what's being negotiated. Number one, uh, as, as I experienced in the past as a sitting county commissioner, a lot of times, what you're being brought as a package isn't exactly the final answer. It isn't, it isn't the only, uh, thing that will make the difference. A lot of times, as I'll quote Mr. Tommy Mann, who used to tell me this, it's, uh, showing them a little love. Uh, in this case, you're showing them a little love in a very unusual way, and that's buying the land for them. Okay, and I would offer to you, I think you can do this deal without having to buy the land for them. I think what you can do is you can go back and renegotiate. There are several things that Lee County offers, which is, which makes us a really good location. One, obviously, is the, is the location, the geographic location of this county, uh, and the fact that land values are very inexpensive here relative to the areas around us. If you go into, into Moore County, or if you go into Chatham County, some land values tend to go up a lot. Uh, secondly, I think if you were to work with this company, because it's knowledge worker industry, and try to work around, uh, maybe their educational requirements. There may be some, uh, opportunity to work with them on a community college grant. That's something that everybody can apply for, everybody can take use of. That seems to be a fair, level playing field type of opportunity, work with them on, on training. Infrastructure improvements. Obviously, if they're gonna come here and work in a knowledge-based industry, what you want, they're gonna need infrastructure of sorts. The same infrastructure that can support other companies. I would suggest you present that back to them and say, look, you know, we could, we'd be glad to, you know, water sewer if there are, if there's a, uh, high-speed broadband, uh, that you need into that, into that facility. Uh, work with them on infrastructure projects where other, other companies or other area, other people in that industry could also take advantage of. Find things that you can offer them, which keep it a level playing field, so that other businesses don't feel like they're being disadvantaged. Now, let's suppose for a moment that this company, and I don't, I don't know what this company does, but I can just assume, you know, that it's in a, in a technology-based industry. Let's say that this company is gonna directly compete with a company that's located in Apex, North Carolina, or in Cary, North Carolina. And what we've done is if we buy their land for them, and then we provide them a facility to operate out of, what you've done is you've just intruded into a fair and, and competitive, uh, economic market. And so what you've got is you've now created an imbalance. And in, and, and after the time passes that, uh, that the benefit of buying that land for them passes, now they have to compete on a level playing field with that same company. And what happens if they're no longer competitive? Like Pfizer became uncompetitive for a long time, and then what happened? They shrank their workforce, they, they, they moved a lot of their equipment, and they're no longer able to pay the same tax base. I agree with Mr. Bradley on a couple of things. One, you get a lot of tax base increase when you get companies in here with equipment, high, high-tech equipment. That brings more tax base into Lee County, but that stuff's mobile. That stuff can move very rapidly, and your tax base shrinks again. And what you've done is you've built the expectation on future revenues, which isn't there. The same, the same thing on jobs. That's, that's a big canard that a lot of people believe about jobs. Most of these knowledge workers will not live in Lee County. These knowledge workers will go, particularly if they're South Asian, these knowledge workers will go to Cary, Apex, where there, where there are more, more folks that are, that believe the same way they do, or that are from that same culture. They tend to, to share a lot of resources, and they tend to, to commute with each other. And what you'll have is we're gonna be a bedroom, I'm sorry, we will be an, an in-migration type of facility for them. They will, they will commute in here from a place with a higher quality of life, lower crime, better schools. They will, they will migrate in and out of Lee County, so those jobs really won't be Lee County jobs. Those jobs will be Cary, Apex, Holly Springs jobs. And that's what you're gonna be getting back and forth. Those people will not locate here, for the most part. So, you know, I, I would just argue to you what little the public is allowed to know about this company. It, it, it looks very suspicious, especially when you start saying, well, we're gonna buy land for you, or we're gonna help you build your building. An imbalance that, that, uh, competitive playing field. I would just say, there's a better way to do this, and I think you can still get that company. I think you can still get that company by negotiating with them in good faith on all those other things that we can offer that make us a better fit than perhaps some of these other places they're looking at, out of, out of the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Womack. Anyone else to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. All right, um, public comments.
Madam Chairman, we need, we need votes on this project. Based on the timeline the company has asked us to move forward with, so.
Okay. Is there a motion to suspend the policy?
Don't move.
Okay, any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, well, we've heard, we've, you've got your information in your pocket. We've had several presentations on this project. Is there a motion?
So move.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion to approve this project on the floor. Any discussion?
All.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. And, um, we'll just wait to hear. All right, um, on our public comments section, Mr. Womack, did you have, okay.
Very briefly, Jim Womack, 1615 Boone Trail Road. I just wanted to say that I know that, uh, there's gonna be a new, new business brought up today about concealed carry. I just want to revisit, uh, 2013, 2014, when we, uh, the commission last passed that ordinance, uh, later got scuttled. I would just like to say I still support that ordinance. I think that the citizens of Lee County would very much appreciate the opportunity to arm themselves in public areas. You know, I, I know, uh, that it's a great inconvenience to have to go into certain government facilities and have to, uh, have to secure your weapon somewhere else when you, when you do concealed carry. I think that, that citizens are entitled to protect themselves, their life and their property, and, uh, when they go about conducting their business. And I, I think it would be, we should join that growing number of counties, and Lee, and Lee County should join that growing number of counties around the state uh, that allows citizens, uh, that are, that are law-abiding citizens to protect themselves, uh, wherever they go. And I dare say, and I know that there were surveys done in the past, uh, among some of the workers here in Lee County that were fearful of allowing weapons to be brought in there. And I think we also heard testimony that there are, there are weapons already being brought into Lee County facilities, particularly knives and, and other types of, of weapons. Uh, I think, I think it's only fair that, that the citizens, uh, and, and hopefully, you will include in that the employees of the county will be able to protect themselves and arm themselves. I leave that to you. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Womack. Okay, we also have Mr. Whitaker, but I think he was really.
Right, for the other one.
Yeah, yeah, so he's not here.
Can you take another comment about the gun free?
Um, if, if you can be brief, yes, sir. Name and address, please, for.
My name is Don Schreiner, 406 Spotswood Drive in Sanford. And I just want to speak in support of not allowing to have a gun-free zone. The only people that pay attention to the gun-free zones are law-abiding citizens. The crooks don't care if it's a gun-free zone. And I support what Jim just stated. It's, uh, it's something our community needs for our own protection. And, uh, I think that would be a good move for us to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schreiner. Okay, we don't really have any old business. I think we covered all that during our public hearings. And then some. Um, we'll move on to new business, um, with item A, a request for approval of interlocal agreement between Lee County and Chatham County for broadband expansion. And Mr. Edwards couldn't be here tonight, so I think Dr. Crumpton's gonna take this one.
Yes, ma'am. Um, this agreement actually came from a meeting that we were attended in Chatham County a few months ago with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Uh, we heard that Chatham and Orange Counties had signed an agreement where they were using, uh, facilities to go across their county lines, to, uh, use open broadband, to get broadband into rural communities. And we were approached by Chatham County to, um, um, enter in this agreement and take a look at, uh, areas where we have common boundaries, mainly Moncur at this point, to try to see if we can hit some of our rural areas and get this. So there's no money associated with this contract. This is just an agreement to work together. And, um, you know, obviously, we're recommending approval for this.
Madam Chair, move to approve the Chatham County interlocal agreement regarding North Carolina broadband.
Okay, any comments or discussion? Hopefully, this is the beginning, like we talked about in the meeting Friday. Hopefully, we can, you know, bring Harnett County on to our south, and maybe they can bring Cumberland on. We can get more involved, and perhaps Wake, and, um, it's, it's a really good way to, to build out broadband access for our citizens. And, um, I, I think in a fairly inexpensive way, so hopefully, we'll, we'll get this done. There's a motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Um, now a consideration to offer to purchase property located on Wildwood Drive. Ms. Campbell?
Thank you very much. Um, beginning on page 273 of your packets is information regarding an offer to purchase property located on Wildwood, Wildwood Drive in the Wildwood subdivision. Pit number 9634-12-1809. Um, this property has a taxable value of $5,900. Um, the offer was from Joseph Benjamin Lucas and was in the amount of $1,500. He has paid the requisite deposit of 5% along with $200 in advertising costs. Um, the county obtained this property through, it was a little bit different than tax foreclosure process. This was obtained, um, at the time that the county owned the water system. Um, the county did an expansion through a private development and, um, had a, um, assessment done on this particular parcel. That assessment was $1,912.49. At the time, the landowner decided to convey the property to the county instead of paying that assessment fee. And that's the only value that's owed on the property. There are no outstanding taxes. Um, if the board's inclined to accept the offer from Mr. Lucas, they can declare the property a surplus and authorize staff to proceed with the upset bid process until such time that the highest bid is obtained, in which case I'll go ahead and bring the final offer back to the board for the board's approval.
Move to approve.
All right, any questions for discussion? Okay, all those in favor of, um, accepting the bid and then continuing through the upset bid process, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, um, item D, uh, the discussion on concealed carry in county buildings?
I believe we had the resolution for Kelly Drive.
Item C.
Oh, I'm so sorry, and that's mine. I wrote, I wrote over mine when I put yours in there. Um, yeah, if, if you look on page 284, um, I know we've had, uh, the manager and I've been in some meetings. Uh, Commissioner Dodson and, um, Commissioner Sharp were also, uh, in attendance at the interlocal meeting that we had last Friday. And, um, you know, we, we continue to try to get Kelly Drive rerouted, um, to, um, the, sort of the right-hand side of what is now the campus with the new buildings behind the Civic Center. Um, and in, in discussions with some of the folks at the college, um, with the, um, folks with Lee Early College, and, and then in, in thinking about future projects with our library. We just felt like we would try one more time. Uh, I did not realize, to be honest with you, when I, when I first mentioned it to the manager and to our clerk about doing this resolution, um, when Ms. Campbell started putting the timeline together of how many times we have told DOT, this is our top priority in the county. This is a serious safety concern. Um, it, it was a little, um, eye-opening, how many times since October of 15 we have gone to them and, and sort of begged for help. Um, we feel like it's even more imperative now because the architects have told, um, the county manager and the folks at CCCC that the best place to put the library in Lee Early College will actually be down kind of behind the Health Science Center, which will be across the road. So again, that will be library and that will be library and Lee Early College, which is our third high school, you know? That will be across the road, but again, students will have to go back and forth. So we feel like, um, in, in talking with our representatives in Raleigh, um, maybe it's a good time for another ask, now that we have that information. So I'd just ask the board to consider the adoption or, or the resolution.
Madam Chair, when we had our meeting with Frank Williams on Saturday, you mentioned that Magnetti Marielli is looking at the proposed rerouting to make major entrance into their facility.
Yep, that's exactly right. And they've been in favor of it the entire time, not having to come out on Main Street with the high school traffic.
You need a motion to approve?
Just a quick question. Where, where, where do we stand on, on, on asking the DOT for, like, US-1 and Tramway? And that area, that seems to be inhibiting a lot of growth too.
That's.
That was, uh, that was pushed by?
That has been, but it's been put back on the, what do they call it, the CI, tip.
Tip, tip.
The tip for the next five-year cycle. And it's one of the top five of the eight that we recommended. And we brought it before this board some weeks back, or months back.
I think that's an important one, too, that we should look at and address.
Yes, sir.
The, the timing for addressing that issue again is over the next few years, when the US Open is coming back. That's when they typically will spend more attention and money on the US-1 going south and take care of the traffic going in that direction.
Speed it up.
Yeah. I'm gonna offer a motion to approve the resolution.
Okay.
But I'd also ask that we consider asking our newly-appointed commissioner to DOT
Yes.
to endorse concurrently this resolution.
Okay.
And make it one of her priorities.
Yeah. And also, um, the city of Sanford and the town of Broadway were gonna entertain similar resolutions at their meetings.
I always had, I always had a, you know, I'm gonna support the resolution. The question is, is, I always thought that, that, that one road leading in there was always congested regardless of where it is. Like, was it a little further down or in front? I always thought two would be, make more sense going into that area.
One through the middle of campus and then one on the other side.
Yeah, why is that? Or just leave it the, you know, and just add another route in?
I, I think the, you know, the idea, if you look at some of the renderings of the campus, is if you move it over to the right, on the other side of the Civic Center, then you create a college campus where you actually, where the road is would actually be a quad-type situation.
Little bigger.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Is that, isn't that the last drawings and things that you saw?
I can, I can send the drawings out to everybody.
Yeah, it, it would just.
So, yeah, so I'm looking at the one-laner and a one-laner, and I'm just like.
Yeah, no, I mean.
Still too much congestion, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got a motion to approve the resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
That motion included requests in the.
Right, for Ms. Mathis to, mm-hmm. Did you get that, Ms. Campbell?
Thank you.
Okay. Now, Commissioner Dodson.
I try to be brief. Um, so the board now is revisiting this, uh, topic on the, uh, the repeal of concealed carry as it currently is right now to allow law-abiding citizens with a concealed carry permit to, to be able to enter certain, uh, public county buildings. Obviously, this would not include the courthouse, uh, would not be for that anyway. Um, and that I don't believe that this should include open carry. Uh, the idea of concealed carry is that nobody sees the fire on. Um, I'd just like to echo, uh, I'd just like to echo what some others have said, that I firmly believe, well, I've always believed that signs on doors, you know, doesn't keep anybody from carrying a gun in there. For example, I go to check my mail on a daily basis, and there is a sign there saying, "No weapons allowed beyond that point," which, as I understand that, that's federal property, anyway, and nobody, there's no law that you're gonna allow that's gonna allow for that. But what we are talking about is a complete repeal, whereas I believe Commissioner Smith, back a few, just a few years ago, put this on for a vote, and it was voted and then turned back over again. I know this is for discussion at this time, but I'd like to see it go through the complete process ultimately for a vote. I'd just also like to say that some people may not know this, but people that receive a concealed carry permit, they have a thorough background check done, more than what is required for just a regular gun purchase permit. And they are also have a thorough mental health background check. They have to sign a waiver allowing the sheriff's office to check those records. So, but I do, I just believe that citizens that have the permit have jumped through the hoops, jumped through all the requirements and have been vetted, should be allowed to defend themselves and perhaps defend you or me. It may come to that. Because, guys, ladies and gentlemen, a criminal is gonna bring a gun in here, anyway. I mean, some people may say, "Well, I don't like the ideas of this because what if somebody gets mad and comes up to the tax office because they dispute their tax bill and they bring a gun in?" Well, they can do that, anyway, right now. I mean, the sign's not gonna keep that from happening. I just believe law-abiding, decent citizens are not gonna do anything extreme like that, okay? I'd be willing to bet, if it was, the percentage is minuscule compared to just anybody can do whatever. I mean, listen, we're supposed to go 55 miles an hour in certain zones. Has anybody ever broke the speed limit? The speed limit law is absolute law. You go 56 miles an hour, you're breaking the law, okay? But I think this is a much bigger matter. And of course, this is in light of the El Paso shooting and the Dayton shooting. You know, I've been thinking about bringing this more for some time now, but, you know, enough's enough.
Can we just, now, I think the prior resolution is outdated because of some, I think, what I found, some federal issues and stuff. So can we, just make a motion that we move it to get it updated and then bring it back revised, you know, with taking in the new federal guidelines?
By the way, Ms. Campbell, I'm sure you were probably involved in this. Whoever prepared this book, this presentation with information and facts, I applaud you on that. Very good job. Plenty to look at and review.
Was that a motion, Commissioner?
That is a motion. So just to revise our ordinance to be in compliance.
Is there a discussion?
I don't, you know, I don't think we have a vote. I don't think it's, I don't think the ordinance is in compliance as it was written in the past. Are we up to date on that? I don't think it is, is it?
We'll have to review the ordinance and bring it back at the next meeting. The ordinance process will still take two readings.
Regardless, right? Correct. So I'm just saying that let's, have staff update it, just bring it to us.
Before we hold a vote?
Yes, sir. I think that's...
Let's avoid that.
I don't know if I can vote on something that's not up to date, but I want to move forward, but I want it to be spot-on so everybody has, understands where it sits and the rules accordingly.
Call the question.
So, do we have, we have to have two readings?
That's correct, unless it's adopted unanimously at the first reading.
I think we need to have a public hearing.
Well, that's a requirement.
It's not a requirement. It's a regular ordinance, but you could follow that requirement of a public hearing.
But I do believe, because of the issue, we do need to have a public hearing. So Jennifer, how does that work? Do we, can we do the first reading and have the public hearing at the same meeting? We can do that, right? Okay. Okay. So, do you want to set the public hearing for September? When is that?
Sounds good.
Well, why aren't we taking a look at what your motion addresses? And let's see what steps are in there.
I think, in terms of, we got ahead of ourselves. I just want to, let's just get it in writing, how we're, what we're gonna vote on.
Right.
And then we can hold the public hearing. Just get it...
That's correct.
...ironed out, because maybe there's some things that may take the staff a little longer. I hope not, because when's our next meeting?
September.
September 16th. We should be able to have it, we should be able to have the ordinance ready. Plus, we're gonna...
And then we can all review it.
Submit a...
Everybody can review it.
And then the public hearing, and then...
Right.
Okay.
We're gonna set, submit a personnel policy as well for employees as well for this. So we had that written the last time. We'll put it before you at this time as well.
So what do you want the ordinance to say?
I think it's just revise it to make sure that we're statutorily correct. That's all.
I think the intent in the conversations we had is just to make sure that we're in compliance with federal and state law and to allow it wherever it is allowed under state law.
Something's changed since the last time we had it.
So you just want concealed carry?
As opposed to what? What else?
Concealed carry and open carry.
I'm not sure you can do open carry.
I would not support open carry, no. To be sincere.
So you have one and not the other?
Because anybody, no, 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 no. Open carry's been lawful since 1921.
No, no. But not in here.
Right, but I, no, not open carry in our public buildings.
Only concealed carry.
Only concealed carry, because these individuals have been vetted.
Does the call to question mean anything anymore?
Yeah.
Call the question.
Okay.
I think I understand.
All right.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Monthly financial report.
You have before you the preliminary report for June 2019. Again, we'll be bringing you back the final report when we present the financial statements to you, hopefully, in November or December. So for, right now, all of our departments are under budget. We ended up at Avalorum tax budget at about 102%, of our budget. So we did exceed our collection projection there, which is outstanding work by our tax department. Other revenues, you'll see, are still coming up short, such as sales tax, because we run three months behind, and I think, and this number may include a couple of those months already. So we should be close to budget when we get that. Any questions on the report at this time? We also have the May 2019 tax, sales tax collection update, and we continue to track well with our budget and are still seeing a 5% to 6% growth, and we'll hope that that continues on into the current fiscal year.
Thank you very much.
If I can add, I was, when things were slow at the store today, I was going through our financials. Compared to last year, we've had an 8% increase.
That's great, Carl.
So it just shows you the economy is booming along.
It continues. Thank you. Yes, same. Okay. Maintenance reports?
Yes, ma'am. I need to add an item that's not in there, but we received the RFPs for government, center, and engineering. The engineering for this building, which is a budgeted item in the current year's budget. We received two proposals. We're going to be recommending to the board mostly architects, and we'll have a contract at the next meeting to award them the contract. We believe that, you know, number one, they have the experience in doing this type of work, and number two, with the possible, you know, bidding of Phase Two at the courthouse, which we'll probably need to coordinate those two bids together. So we kind of like that idea. So, in speaking of mostly architect, courthouse renovation projects, I'm getting ready to sign the cost estimates for what's called Phase One, which is the fireplace building and the historic courthouse. Those numbers are, actually look pretty good compared to budget. The second phase, which is the current courthouse, is pretty much way over budget. I asked them to go back and make some changes before I talked to the board about how much we're over budget, which is a lot. So we'll be talking about that. Kiwanis Family Park, we heard the update, the interlocal committee, heard that on Friday. They're still intending to open for Labor Day weekend, the splash pad, and the rest of the work out there is rushing to completion. If you haven't been out there to look at their playground, equipment is fantastic. I walked by there on Saturday morning with the dog. Very impressive what the city has done there. Lee County Government Parks and Recreation Plans for Kiwanis Family, or Kiwanis Children's Park, excuse me, that should be Kiwanis Children's Park, OT, or Horton Park, OT Sloan Park and Temple Park. The Phase One, we've seen the construction drawings, should be out to bid in the next 30, 45 days. Then we should be under construction before the first of the year and finish towards the end of spring. So we have a pretty good timetable on that. The airport terminal building is coming to completion. Looks really good. October 10th at 5:30 is the public grand opening of that facility. So hopefully, put that on your calendar and try to be out there. Not much going on at the legislature. There was some movement on local option, sales tax bills that would potentially allow the county to increase its local quarter set to half a set, and something that we really haven't discussed much about. But may do in the future if that all passes and goes through. The opioid crisis, we received news through Health Director Heath Kane that First Health received a three-year grant totaling a million dollars to address the crisis in Lee County. That's a pretty big grant, pretty big number. And Heath is staying in touch with them and will let us know what's gonna happen going forward. Every five years or so, all the rural fire departments are inspected by the State Department of Insurance. And I haven't been forwarding the reports to you, but I got one for the Tranway Rural Fire Department and decided I probably should have been, because the reports that we get for our rural fire departments are quite impressive for rural fire departments. And the increases that we get in the fire ratings and the impact that has on people's...
Homeowners.
Homeowners' insurance is pretty impressive. So I will keep those reports going to you going forward. And congratulations to Tranway on a great report.
Do they publish that for the community?
No, sir, they do not. You can get it from the Department of Insurance, but it's not, you know, if you asked about it. But we could, we could make that available on the website.
I think that would be good, so that people have a better understanding of the benefits they receive.
So, and that's pretty much my report.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Commissioners' comments? Commissioner Smith?
Madam Chair, I did attend the White House conference for North Carolina, South Carolina, and Tennessee. I sent everybody six pages of notes. It was four and a half hours of nonstop presentations, questions and answers. And when I came home the next morning, I got up and gave four and a half hours' worth of notes. So please, if you have any questions...
Thank you.
There was quite a few opioids, broadband, interacting with the Department of Agriculture and commerce, or with broadband in mind, as well as with the opioid crisis getting out and reaching out into the rural communities and such. It was quite extensive.
Okay.
And another item is the Sand Hill Center has the Ashboro facility, was completed. The local ordinance, or the local inspectors gave them a green light, go. The state checked out the elevator, the elevator passed, and then the Department of Health and Human Services came in there and shut them down. So they have a bunch of, just a bunch of corrections they've gotta fix that they have to deal with. So we'll let you know when that facility becomes, comes online full 100%.
Thank you.
I just keep our, our show's part in repairs, still recovering from his injuries.
Thank you.
I know we had a young softball team here tonight, but, and congratulations to them on their state championship. We also had a nine-and-under team from Northview that went to the Cal Ripken World Series that finished third in the World Series down at Florida. So I'd give them a shout-out as well.
Thank you.
I'm good. Thank you.
On the topic of DOT, I live right off of 42 by the old mill. And every time I leave my house and every time I come home, I see a big flashing sign about the bridge being closed. And that sign was put up in March of 2018. And there's no end in sight. And I've talked with a lot of people who are my neighbors, who live right down the road and who are greatly affected by it every day, and it's extremely frustrating. And we know that we don't, there's little we can do with roads except continue to press DOT. And so I spoke with Representative Salz, and he said that he would continue to press the issue again. It'd been about a few weeks since he had had an update about it, so he was going to reach out this week. And I also spoke with our North Carolina appointee for DOT, and she said that it is on their top priority list and that they're planning a site visit soon. So hopefully, we can...
Site visit when, I'm sorry?
Soon. I don't have a date. So, yes.
No soon?
Yeah, soon. But our soon and their soon is very different. So I don't know, but just, that's, you know, it's the thing that I'm very aware of and that I see every day. And I, I don't have the same frustration, because I don't have to drive 20 minutes out of the way like a lot of other people do that live right there. But I'm aware of it, and I'm trying to do everything I can to get, push the right buttons.
I mean, so the update, we talked about that, the first contractor, obviously, out.
Right. So right now...
They're taking bits for...
Mm-hmm. Through the bonding company and waiting for getting a contractor. So at this point, we're still trying, they're still trying to get a contractor. So, yes. Anyway.
They wanted to use this afternoon?
Yeah.
Same bridge.
Yep.
Well, keep trying, and we'll keep trying, and...
Absolutely.
We'll be soon, we'll be sooner.
Yes.
Commissioner Reeves?
I've got a couple of things, and one was the airport overlay. That really needs further review. My understanding from one of the speakers tonight is that they could conceivably lose 128 houses or property. That's serious. And then, I think the last person came up, said that they had, like, 900 acres in there. I think the airport is very, very important, but so are people's rights. And I hope that Planning will thoroughly investigate this situation and bring something back to us that, a map that shows a breakdown of the property owners and what they have and what the proposal would do to their land and their potential development. This is not a matter that we should take lightly. The other concern I had, and the manager advised me the other day, that with the activity we seem to be gaining in Lee County and Sandford, inspections, you and I talked about inspections. So that's gonna be a very serious... I can see no reason for us not to already be looking ahead and saying, "We need to get standby people to come in here and fulfill some of these requests." It's not nice to try to eat breakfast with somebody barking over your shoulder about So I just think we ought to have a very direct discussion with Planning to make sure that that's gonna get...
I think the Health Director was looking at that, too.
Okay.
Before I'm gonna present, Pirees discussed that with you.
All right.
Yeah. So he's forward-thinking, and we did have that discussion during, so, you know, we had that discussion during the board meeting. That is a concern, and he's looking at projections and gonna give recommendations.
All right. Thank you.
And to your points, Commissioner Reeves, I know when we had the interlocal meeting Friday, we discussed that.
Okay.
You know, talked with our manager, and then the city manager was there and the mayor, that...
He's on the job.
Yeah, he is, he is. And when we, you know, when we get the reports once a month in our packet about all... about all the different permits and, and all the people that, you know, submitting plans, we definitely wanna be proactive instead of trying to scramble and find somebody because we know it's coming. We can't look at the citizens in six months and go, we didn't know this was gonna happen, you know?
No, and I agree, but the other part of it is the individual who's doing the inspection, that's a lot of pressure.
Absolutely.
That's a lot of pressure.
Absolutely.
Not everybody's kind and polite when you come to their job site and tell them something.
That's, that's, yes. Well, and that's when mistakes are made too.
Get back out quickly to say, oh, yeah, you did change that.
Right.
Continue going.
And, and the airport overlay, I have some concerns as well. John, is there a way, I mean, and I don't, you know, if, if they could come and sort of explain the process of how they got to that, you know, kind of, I can't remember, maybe Mr. Clegg, of course, he's got a little bit more experience than average person, I guess, but he, I've lost my notes now, but he, he made a comment about, you know, why even going to the northern side, you know? So, maybe just to help us?
Well, within the, the land use plan for the airport, the strategic plan and the, and the use of the airport that we went through, there's a diagram that looks like a, I don't know, eight, figure eight, and it shows, you know, what the consultant, airport consultant was recommending for, for the area based on glide path and all that kinda stuff. So, there's a scientific-
Sure.
Engineering way that they look at that. And so, then, when you take that and you lay that over it, you know, it's obviously not completely proportional because of property lines and the way you, you know, you, you know, are trying to, you know, make sure that you include what the parcels without cutting a parcel in half, so to speak. So, you know, that, that's just the way the parcels were, you know, when you lay those two over together, but, you know, I'll be glad to bring that to the next meeting and show the board how that over, overlays, and it has to do with the glide path, and it's also a noise factor for the, for the homes. So, you know, one of the things that was brought up, I think Mr. Clegg brought it up, or Mr. Whitaker brought it up about the noise and that there'd already been some issues in those two developments over Copper Ridge. We've had some complaints because people forget that on a visual approach, you go over the, the middle of the, of it, make sure there's no activity on the runway, and then you peel back, you know, once you see the windsock, you know, come around and you go into the wind for your landing. And so, right there, Captain Rod Sullivan rode, that's where is a focal point for the pilots to go across the runway to, to do a visual. So, yeah, we have, we've had some issues out there, and I think we're, the Airport Authority itself is just trying to avert anything that would be major. Now, some of these people's talking about homes, some of these properties, the one lady who talked about her retirement, she is sitting on prime industrial property. So, it's right there on US 1. So, I mean, you know, you know, there's, there could be other uses for it, and, and I can see why Mr. Clegg would be interested because the sewer line goes across Lower Moncur Road over into Chatham County, so it goes right by his property. So, you know, the city is gonna be selective, you know? They don't have an unlimited capacity up in, you know, going up in that area, so they're gonna wanna get the highest and best use out of that sewer line, and industrial use in their viewpoint is the highest and best use. So, but anyway, I'll take, I'll bring you the, I'll bring you that engineering thing that's in our, that's in our plan and, and for the airport, what the consultant recommended on trying to get us to, to keep commercial and industrial development closer to the airport and residential development away from the airport.
Do you know if this is the minimum overlay size?
Well, based on the, you know, what I remember from the, the figure eight, that would, it just fits right in. So, you know, it would be, I would say that that is the minimum recommended size. But, you know, and it also depends on what kind of airplanes are coming in and out of there.
Absolutely.
With the increase in the number of jets that are using the airport and coming in and out of there, it's a whole different ballgame with the, with the jets, and, you know, we're all competing for all these airplanes that are being pushed out of RDU, and we're expecting to have more of the heavy, of the heavy jets out there. So, I have a, I took a video of, on my phone of a G5 taking off at the airport, and I can tell you it's a lot different than a little Cessna 182. It, it, it will get your attention as it takes off, and of course, it needs a longer glide path coming in, so of course, you're always worried about those obstructions at the end and what they, you know, if they came up short, what they might run into. So, anyway, I've learned more about airports being on the Airport Authority than I ever thought I would learn, and, but I also understand their concern too, and we've talked about different acreages, you know, other than the five. And so, I think that's, you know, I know, I know Marshals looked at other airports and looked at other areas and tried to come up with kind of a, you know, what, what others are doing.
Yeah, 'cause I think, you know, a couple of the landowners, you know, you know, I think they see, they go out like to RDU. I mean, they're major shopping centers and apartment complexes and all just right up under it. So, you know, they had been built since the airport, obviously, usually in the last couple of years as Wake County's exploded. So, you know?
I was town manager in Mooresville when a lot of that development was approved, not done, because I wasn't there very long, but I can tell you that the RDU people were not happy that the town of Mooresville was approving those developments that were going right on the glide path of two runways. They have two runways, I think. So, yeah, so, yeah, there's always that concern, and if you remember, there was a crash at, at RDU and went through, you know, a bad area. So, anyway, it's just, it's just a safety issue, and-
Sure.
I understand the, the land use thing too, but the board also has a responsibility to, to protect the airport and also protect the people who would live there or work there, who would be in the glide slope. So, it's a tough balance, and it's not an easy thing to determine. I understand that.
Yeah, I, I just think for our board, you know, as much information as we can have, you know, as to why they came to that overlay area and shape and-
I have a stick that has that whole report on it.
Perfect.
I'll be glad to print out those sections about that glide path and the little figure eight, all color coded and everything, and bring it to you and have it for you in the next agenda.
Okay, thank you.
You know, if the board wants, but then another thing, the board, you know, can take its time on voting whatever comes back from the planning board, or can send it back to the planning board. You know, we don't, you know, I, I think what you should realize from tonight's agenda is that public hearings in the future will probably be more, not less, in that, you know, we in the past have not had to deal with a lot of land use issues, and you're gonna deal with a lot more going forward. So, you know, as you, as you think about your relationship with the planning board, you don't always have to accept that first recommendation. You can send it back to them and say, hey, we want you to take a look at this further and consider X, X, and X, and don't be bashful to, to do that. I would suggest that you do that and use them to do your research for you.
Oh, another possibility is that the planning board could perhaps give us a summary of where they are before we have it on the agendas to see if anybody has any concerns. You know, I cared much about the, the half acre property owner out here that do the 1,200 acres.
Sure.
But I can also tell you financially, there's a whole lot of difference, a lot of difference, and that has to be considered.
Yes. Okay, and, and, and one other thing, just for the manager, like with the courthouse and then in your report with the park projects, where you revised things, could we get just, you know, just a list of those? Because I know in our conversations with people in the park communities or that work at the courthouse and register of deeds and all, you know, as we've talked about the, the plans for those projects, if they've changed, I think we need to be aware of that so we don't promise something that's not gonna happen anymore, you know?
I'll be glad to send those out.
Okay. Okay. And I guess I don't have anything else other than just to remind everybody, I've, I've got the honor of speaking to the new school staff in the morning. That's their first official day of school, so that'll be a lot of fun. It's hard to believe that summer is over almost, and I think the kids start back on the 26th for the traditional calendar. The year round's already started about a month ago, but just remember that in about a week, the buses are gonna be rolling again and little ones crossing the street and all that kinda thing. So, we need to be aware and be safe and just hope all the teachers and staff and principals and families, little kiddos have, have a good start to the year. I know we've got some staff that have some starting school for the first time, and so I think it'll be a good year for everybody. At this time, we'll entertain a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that we go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318, 211A4 to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of business and also per General Statute 143-318, 11A5 to discuss the acquisition of real property.
All right. Have a motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're in closed session. Thank you.